President.
Counselor David G. Romero.
President.
Counselor Barbara Casey.
Here.
Counselor Vincent Howell.
Here.
Counselor David A. Uliwari Jr.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, we do have a call.
Thank you very much. [inaudible 00:01:28]
[inaudible 00:01:30] And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Uliwari. Do you have a second?
I'm going to sign this for the keys that are up, for the regionals and the little leaks, for other coaches, parents, kids. Pay for them, go and come back. Hopefully they can bring us out to show up and be back.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Uh, Commissioner Uliwari.
The agenda.
Okay, do you have a second? Do I have a second on the agenda? Well, we can't move on then. Let's see if she's just a joke.
May I speak?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, um, this, the majority of this council has made agenda requests on several occasions, and those requests have been, I don't know if they've been ignored or just rejected, but our items never appear on the agenda. And so it's very difficult for us to approve an agenda that has nothing in it that we want.
Okay, I understand. Okay, fine, just continue.
May I finish?
Mm-hmm, of course.
Thank you. Another thing that is of concern for me is that we have not filled any of the four positions that you are supposed to name. At the June meeting, you stated, and it is in the minutes from the June meeting, that two of the positions would be filled within two weeks, and that we would have a special meeting to address those two. And two weeks have gone by, more than two weeks have gone by, and nothing has happened. We've missed the statutory and charter timelines for that. We have not reorganized, and that is a concern to me. You have said that you are doing your due diligence in looking for someone who is highly qualified to fill those four positions. However, you knew since December that at least three of those positions needed to be filled by the end of March or April with a runoff election, as soon, you know, soon after the election. And you also said that you were going to do, advertise those jobs and do a nationwide search. Well, the jobs aren't even listed on our city website. They're not listed on any job site that I could find. They are not listed in the Department of Workforce Solutions, who lists all the jobs in the state. They're not listed in the Journal or the Santa Fe New Mexican. So, uh, these are things that I think really need to be addressed. I think we've waited long enough. We need to take some action here and get the city moving. The police department can't do their collective bargaining. There are other areas where the departments are kind of working on hold, and so I really think that we need to start addressing these issues. And the biggest one for me is that, in the whole time that I have been a member of this council, my agenda requests have never been honored. Counselor Howell's agenda requests have never been honored. Counselor Romero's, uh, one, well, two requests that I know of that he has made in collaboration, all three of us signed the request, and they have not been honored either. And so we would like to have items on the agenda that we can discuss that are a concern to our constituency, and I think that you need to, uh, address those issues. And, uh, I would suggest that we do that as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. I must now respond to your concerns, Counselor Casey. Uh, first of all, with regards to filling the positions, there is a process, and I will have, Mr. Fresca, could you read this memo into the record? I provided it to the optic, but nothing was ever written, and I will be providing it to the Santa Fe New Mexican with regards to the actual process. Read that for the record, and I want the whole audience to hear it.
Memorandum, subject: Response to Notice of Special Governing Body Meeting from Mayor Tonita Gurlejiron to Cassandra Fresca, City Clerk, Vincent Howell, City Counselor, Barbara Perea, Casey, City Counselor, David G. Romero, City Counselor. Date: April 26, 2018. I am in receipt of a notice of a special governing body meeting called by a majority of governing body. This notice is improper, and the city clerk is directed not to publish notice of this meeting. Governing body adopted by Resolution 02-17 on July 17, 2002, the City of Las Vegas Governing Body rules of procedure. This has been in effect since that time and has never been revised or repealed. Procedurally, this resolution has always been followed. While the council has a right to call a special meeting, the charter is not clear that they have a right to set a particular date, and they do not have the right to set the agenda. This resolution allows for preparation of all meeting agendas by the city clerk through the mayor and city manager. I have not approved the addition of the issuance of a request for proposals for a search for a new city manager. Therefore, such an agenda item is inappropriate. Also, the city charter in Section 5.01 states that the mayor shall appoint a city manager subject to the council. Therefore, it is my decision as to how the city manager will be selected, not the city council members. I am preparing a plan for the process that I intend to use in selecting a new city manager, which will be presented by me at the organizational meeting of the city council. It is inappropriate for the city council to attempt to subvert the city charter by placing such an item on an agenda for a city council meeting. No request for proposal process can force me to name any particular person as the city manager. For these reasons, I am directing the city clerk to not publish the notice of special meeting. Further, it appears that the other councils have been in violation of the Open Meetings Act in the preparation of this notice. It would appear that the process of a rolling quorum has been used. It would also appear that there was a prior violation of the open meetings law at the time of the censured vote of my administration. A referral to the Attorney General's office for further investigation is appropriate for these violations.
Thank you, Ms. Fresca. We have that. Now, I'll continue to respond. Um, with, and this notice was provided to the optic. The optic has never followed up or represented anything that we have given you. Uh, you will have individuals who will complain about myself or this administration, and when we attempt to give you a correct and accurate story on what is occurring, Mr. Brooks, you have ignored anything that we have given you and have circumvented any process. I, I don't know what exactly or who your boss is, but somebody needs to be notified. This is ridiculous. We never get our stories out. You never hear our end of the story. You only publish whatever you feel is convenient or maybe sensationalism, which is unfortunate, because the people have the right to get the facts out on both sides of the story, not just the side that you feel that you're representing. That's unfortunate, and it's unfair to this administration who has worked so hard. Now, also, in addition to this, I have never ignored any of the wishes of the council, and I want to make that very clear. The memorandum that was just read into the record is very clear as to what the process is. There is a process, and we all understand that. It is not up to the council to set a time and date. This week is extremely inconvenient for our city attorney, who has been part of the special audit. She must be at that special audit in order that she can also present the side of the city. And every employee has to be there. Now, one of the things that has never been discussed is that the, um, audit states that we paid $30,000 for an audit, when in fact, the city of Las Vegas paid, and we have the facts, we have the numbers, $80,000 for the audit, which, um, essentially was targeted to certain employees, certain departments, and certain individuals. And it's unfortunate that we had to spend that kind of money, when we pay approximately, we use and spend out of our budget approximately $100,000 a year for Millings. We don't know what our status is this year, but we know that $80,000 of that money has been gone to an audit. Uh, on the reorganization, I did call a meeting. There's another memorandum that I did give to the council, and I made every, um, made it, gave them every opportunity to show up to that meeting. It was a reorganizational meeting. They failed to show up. That has nothing to do with me. Now, there, it is literally impossible that three counselors have an emergency on the same time and the same date. I can understand one, but when you have three, that is an impossibility, and they failed to show up. I, I stated this to, uh, Mr. Brooks. I gave him a copy of the memorandum as well, and again, our story was never, uh, we never got our fair shake on that story or what happened. And yet, Mr. Brooks asked me, when I was leaving one day, why is it that I didn't schedule it closer to a certain date? Uh, that is within my due diligence to schedule the meetings, not for you to attempt to, um, set a date to accommodate a council. You, you were out of line, Mr. Brooks. Um, in addition to that, um, Randy Van Flik has been missed, our city manager did contact Randy Van Flik, and Randy was supposed to get back to us, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And he has failed to do that. So, uh, with that said, we have a contract with him. Uh, we are moving forward. We did speak to our city attorney, Danielle Smith. She has worked on the contracts. We still have to sit down to negotiate the contract with the individual who was recommended for the police chief and also for the city attorney. So, that is the contract that was just given to me when, last week?
Yes.
At the, on Friday, so I am reviewing that. I will be having a meeting with the individuals who will be offered that position, hopefully by the end of this week, if not, no later than next week, and then we will set up a date for that. And as far again, as the, again, as far as the, uh, the special audit that was requested by the three counselors, again, which we already did an exit conference, and you all need to know, once you do an exit conference, it's over. That's it. There's nothing more to discuss. The special audit is on the website, correct? Or on the city, on the, uh, where's the, where's the special audit?
State Auditor's website.
The State Auditor's. It's published, and we've made it public, that you can get, get that information there. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's what we had discussed. And that's what we had discussed during the exit conference. So, why we need another special audit? I will give you that special audit, but again, it's going to take more time and more money from the staff to prepare. And I believe that you have prepared. I know that I've been preparing to address this as well, but we also need to have our city attorney present, who was very involved in the special audit process. But we will be setting a date and time. Our city attorney was not here this week. So, that is another reason we could not hold the special audit during this specific date or time. Uh, let me see, with regards to the advertising, I, pretty much what I did is I've been talking to individuals as to get the word out, if they want to apply for the positions. Uh, they're welcome to apply for the positions. We have been getting applications. Uh, you can all spread the word if you want, and tell them to bring the applications in. We screened the applications, as we did for some of the others, and, um, at that point in time, we sent the interview committee. It's a very viable, very reputable interview committee, and they will bring those recommendations, as well as myself, to the council, consistent with policy. Um, let me see, what other concerns that you have? I am unaware, uh, the counselor mentioned here today, that the council has brought, I guess, forth to Ms. Gallegos other agenda item requests. I am unaware of any other agenda items requests. Have they brought those to you?
Uh, no, there was just the one on the special audit.
That's it? So, she mentioned that there has been numerous requests that have been brought forth by the council, and they have been unaddressed and not honored. I'm only aware of two. I don't know of any others. But no others have been brought to you?
No, ma'am.
Okay, um, I, I think that's it. I think I've addressed everything, and I will be advertising what I did tell the council, is I would be advertising the city manager's position through ICMA. Uh, we have a bigger opportunity, and I've discussed this with Counselor Romillo as well, that I would be advertising it, um, through ICMA, and I made that public, and it should be on the record, so. Okay, thank you very much. Let's continue the approval of the agenda. Do we have a second?
I'd like to make a statement also.
Okay, go ahead, with your help.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect, uh, Mayor, I, uh, really think that our energies, uh, to expense our energy to respond to what you just said is really fruitless. I think that, um, when the three counselors signed the agenda request, the first one was to, uh, have a discussion and approve or disapprove the search for a city manager. Now, doing that, if we had that meeting, we would have been discussing it. We would have been, uh, bringing out all of your concerns and all of our concerns. That's the important part of us wanting that, uh, agenda request. On the second, uh, agenda request, it wasn't to review the, uh, special audit. It was to discuss the recommendations that were made from the special audit, not the whole, uh, special audit. Uh, the recommendations were, as you mentioned, Mayor, that we spent $80,000. Well, why spend that much money when we are not even going to really look at the recommendations to discuss it as a, as a council, as a team? Okay? And, and to get input from, hopefully, from the public on those recommendations. I think it's important to be inclusive. We, as council, I know, I'm speaking for myself, and the other counselors can speak for themselves too, that we have not been, um, included in a lot of the decision-making processes that has been happening in the last year and a half. And I think that, uh, you have made a lot of unilateral decisions that really affect, uh, the team-building concept that we should have. And, uh, I, I really am disappointed in all of the, all of the, uh, lack of, uh, acknowledgement of our requests for agenda items. I think that it's important that, uh, the public knows that we, uh, as a governing body are very interested in making sure our community interests are held up front, and, uh, and that the community needs to go forward and not in the reverse. Okay? And it's important that we get involved. We have to give input into some of the critical and, uh, very demanding decisions that have to be made, such as the appointees, such as the, um, the goals and objectives that we have been discussing at the, uh, there are many retreats that we've had. Um, and, and it's very important that we are included. And I feel personally that we are not included. I think you have alienated us, uh, and you have made, uh, this governing body a very divisive governing body. The community out there is telling me that, that the governing body is not working together. And I feel that we want to make sure that we work together. And to work together, we need to be a team. We need to be included in, in a lot of the, um, issues that are coming in front of us, and we need to make sure that, uh, you hear all of our concerns, all of our comments, in order for you to make a decision. We're not, uh, saying that you cannot appoint the four appointees.
You can't. It's the city charter law.
I'm not saying that. That's not what I said. I said, we know that you, you are, have that responsibility. Okay? But we want to be included in, in us providing feedback to you in regards to that.
And you will, when you confirm those.
But you have not included us or even asked us our opinion. And that's what, that's what hurts.
Well said. Thank you.
Okay, you're out of order, Mr. McAllister? He's got the floor.
It's not the first time.
I know that. Okay, continue.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if you realize this, but we, as the four counselors here, really want to work with you. We want to be included. We want to move this community forward. We need to move this community forward. Uh, we don't need to be divisive. We don't need to be, uh, you know, heading, betting, battling heads together. Our community needs us. Our community needs us to lead us forward and, and do the things that are necessary out there and put on the agendas that are concerning the community. They're paying for us to do that. But there are some of the, a lot of their concerns that they bring up at, at the public input meetings are not addressed at, on a regular agenda item. And, and we need to do that.
Counselor Uliwari, are you done?
I have, uh.
Well, I, I'm done now, but.
Anyway, for the special audit that we had, we, we did discuss everything on what needed to be done, what the special audit brought to us. They explained to us what we needed to do. All of us are here. We listened to them, and we understood what they told us. By that, I understood what everything, everything I was saying, and the other, I understood very carefully. If the rest of my counsel didn't understand it, I don't know. And then, and the, and then they made a recommendation that was on the agenda. I was never, uh, they never told me nothing about the, uh, the, uh, things that I wanted to put in the agenda. So, the three counselors made up that for them. I never was aware about that.
I think that.
I, I've got the floor now, Counselor Howell.
Well, I need to respond to.
No, you're not going to respond. I'm going to respond to you.
Because he, he made a comment.
I am the chair. Yes, and you can address that later, but I've got the floor now. You gave up the floor, you're a licorice.
I really didn't give up the floor. I didn't say I was.
Yes, you did. You said, "I'm done." You're out of order, Counselor Howell.
I'm not out of order, Mayor.
You had just.
You had, you had said.
Counselor Howell, you're out of order.
When I was making my, when I was making my comments, you said, "Counselor Uliwari."
And you said, "I'm done now."
Well, that's because you, you addressed Counselor Uliwari.
I have got the floor, Counselor. Okay, with regards to your discussion, during the special audit, Counselor Howell, the recommendations are attached to the special audit as a corrective action plan. Read them, please, so you can know exactly what was discussed. Educate yourself. You're out of order, I've got the floor. Uh, with regards, you made a statement that you want to be included. You understand that you want to be part. There's decisive, there's divisiveness within the council. What else could you possibly expect, Counselor Howell, when you illegally censured me, one? You violate the Open Meetings Act, two. You lie that you were never notified about the impending retirements. I mean, you have caused, you have caused.
What do you mean?
You have caused, yes, you lied.
Oh, by what?
When, when you made, you voted against me and illegally censured me because it was not an action item agenda, I had spoken to you twice, and you said, "I never spoke to you about the impending retirements." Now, why don't you tell the people here today that I did speak to you and speak the truth? Tell them I spoke to you.
No, you haven't.
Yes, I had spoken to you. Prior to the December date.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did, Counselor Howell. There's a camera. We can go back to that camera.
Let's go back there.
Can we please have some order?
Let's go back.
Please have some order.
Thank you, thank you. So, at this point in time, you have caused this tension within this council, not myself. I've never lied about any of you. I have been upfront with you. I have told you everything that I know at that point in time. If it is a legal issue or a, uh, impending legal issue that I cannot discuss, I will not discuss it unless it's public. Then we go into executive session. But as far as this is concerned, Counselor Howell, I have been, uh, very honest with each and every one of you. I have been open. I have attempted to work with each and every one of you, and you have circumvented the processes. And that, that is the, that is the truth. That is the reality. And you had an opportunity to show up, Counselor Howell, to a reorganizational meeting, and you failed to show up.
I had mentioned that I will not be here.
Did you mention to me?
No, I mentioned to the city clerk.
Exactly, and you are to report to the mayor. I had no idea.
I spoke to the city official. I spoke to a city official. And the city official mentioned that she spoke to you. She spoke to city manager, and to make sure that, that you folks understood that I personally was not.
I was never known.
Well, that's, that's the other part.
Exactly. Why didn't you come to me?
Because I was gone at the time.
You could have texted me, like you have in the past. Okay, let's continue.
Madam Mayor, if I can.
Uh, Counselor.
You know, first off, you know, apologize to everybody out there wondering what's happening. I, I think for myself, tonight, I take a stand. I take a stand for all my colleagues. Every single one of us deserves to be heard. And, and in this, you know, not, not making a second on the agenda. And I want to thank you, Mayor. I know you, I've been in discussion with you, and I could easily sit here and say, more than likely, I could get an item on the agenda, but that's not fair to all of us. I think individually, each one of us should be able to put something on the agenda, and I did support, uh, Counselor Howell's. He did mention that he was going to be doing that forum at an open meeting, if I remember, at this last one. So, it was public, so it wasn't, there was no, was no rolling quorum. Followed the process, came into the office, signed my signature. So, tonight, I sit here and, for, for a voice for everyone, because I could take advantage, and I know, like, I mean, I spoke to you on a couple of items, and those items didn't fall through, but it's not fair to everyone. You know, there, there might be a time that I'm in the minority, and because I'm in the minority shouldn't mean that I don't get an item on the agenda. So, tonight, I take a stand, you know, for the majority. You know, tonight, there's three of us, you know, saying that we want things on the agenda. I know we have to go through to the governing rules of procedure. We have to adopt that, but I think I asked it, they've asked me, please be willing until we change that document. Please be willing, you know, to listen to us. If we have something on the agenda, you know, allow us to put it on there. And, and, you know, my stand tonight is, you know, I know Counselor Howell requested that. I don't think it was a big deal. I wasn't here at the time, as Mr. Uliwari said. I wasn't here at the time, as Mr. Yulubri said, the counselor was, I wasn't here when that special audit happened. I have no ideas what the city was doing. You know, I would have liked to be, you know, be told by the officials, this is what's happening, this is what we've done, and that didn't happen, and so tonight, I'm taking that stand that, you know what, I think it's about time that out, you know, any counselors to, to put anything on the agenda.
There is a process, regardless of what's being said here today. That process must be here too, regardless. When you have contacted me, Counselor Romano, I have worked with you like I work with anyone. Counselor Casey has never come to me with an item for the agenda that I'm aware of, and if she has, then I don't know what she went through, but she has not come to me personally. Counselor Howell did come to me on the resettlement that I'm aware of, and when we did put it on the agenda, he voted it down. So then, I had to sit down with the attorneys, because once you vote something down, and we had to change and amend the resettlement agreement, and then he voted affirmatively on behalf of the resettlement. So I think that, you know, we've, I've never turned down anything that has come to me other than the two, and that's consistent with policy. The second one, we have not turned it down. We are going to put something out there, but our attorney must be present for the presentation. That's fair. She was extremely involved with the process. If there's something that comes up legally that we are unable to respond to, she must be present. That's fair. But as far as we're not going to have that meeting, we will absolutely have that meeting. And as a matter of fact, just listening here to Counselor Howell today, I think it's probably better if we hold it as a town hall and just open it up for questions from every single constituent out there, and have them ask those questions. I think that's probably better than a more structured special meeting or city council meeting, and this gives everyone the opportunity to discuss every item on that audit report from the money that we spent on the audit to all the corrective actions that have been addressed and are in the audit, and that's where the $80,000 figure came into. But, and I, I recognize, Counselor Romano, that you're new. I also recognize that you have been, and I can honestly say this publicly, exceptionally professional with your mannerisms and the manner in which you work with the city manager and the staff, and the staff also recognize that, so I commend you for that highly, and thank you very much.
And I just want to say, we need, I mean, we need to stop this, waste it here.
I know.
Thirty minutes, because, I mean, and I'm going to stick up for these, I'm going to stick up for them.
Yes, I know, you said that.
Their, their voices of their constituents should not be shut down.
But I'm telling you, Counselor Romano, they have never requested anything from me directly.
Well, we've got that forum, I mean, that's the one that...
Yes, two, two. Two things in, in all the years that we have worked together. Now, I don't know about Counselor Howell's previous relationship with a previous mayor, but it was very good for some reason, and it just isn't good with me, and I, I don't know why, because we've worked together in the past. So let's move forward. We have the approval of the agenda. We need a second. Okay, so then, I call for a motion to adjourn. No discussion items have been heard, unless you want to reconvene at 11:45 this evening. What is the pleasure of work?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to adjourn.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Okay. May I adjourn? Thank you very much.